Our first order of business is to elect a moderator. Are there any nominations for moderator? Yes.
Kristen Lambert, 22 Old Farms Lane. I nominate Brian Fitzgerald to act as the moderator this evening.
Okay, we have Brian Fitzgerald elected as moderator. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor for Brian Fitzgerald to serve as moderator, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Thank you very much, Brian Fitzgerald, for serving as moderator.
Good evening. Would everyone stand, please, for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I now ask the town clerk to read the call of the meeting.
Thank you. This is a legal notice that was published in the Journal Inquirer on May 2nd. Legal notice, notice of annual meeting for the 2019-2020 Town of Suffield. Notice is hereby given that the annual budget meeting of the inhabitants of the Town of Suffield, Connecticut, qualified to vote in-town meeting, will be held in the auditorium of the Suffield Middle School, 350 Mountain Road, Suffield, on Wednesday, May 8th, 2019, at 7:00 PM, for the following purpose to wit. Number one, to consider and act upon the report and recommendations of the Board of Finance, and to make such appropriations in connection therewith as may be advisable. To consider and set and act upon a motion authorizing the Board of Finance to print and distribute explanatory texts concerning the budget if the budget is petitioned to referendum. Such texts may not advocate approval or disapproval of the budget, and must conform to the Connecticut General Statute, Section 9-369B, dated at Suffield, Connecticut, this first day of May 2019. The Board of Selectmen, Melissa Mack for Selectmen, Mel Shabet Selectmen, Peter Hill Selectmen, Timothy Reynolds Selectmen, and Joanne Sullivan Selectmen.
Do we have a resolution to come before the town meeting?
Hi, Melissa Finnegan, 50 Cedar Crest Lane. Resolved that the town meeting of the Town of Suffield authorizes the proposed budget with a total expenditure of $59,304,109 be approved. Resolved that the town meeting of the Town of Suffield—
That would be a sec—
Oh, sorry.
No, we can do it all together. Go ahead.
Resolved that the town meeting of the Town of Suffield authorizes the Board of Finance to print and distribute explanatory texts concerning the budget if the budget is petitioned to referendum. Such texts may not advocate approval or disapproval of the budget, and must conform to the Connecticut General Statutes, Section 9-369B.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion? It's seconded by Mr. White. The first things, we will have members of the administration and the Board of Education to speak on their proposals. So do we have someone from the Board of Finance first? Board of Finance should come first. Why don't you come first?
Yep. All right. Let's see if the slides are in the order that we just got called up. And they are. Okay. So Ryan Anderson, Chairman, Board of Finance. This will be an abbreviated presentation of what we shared at the public hearing on the 24th. We'll start with just the grant revenues, because a lot of what we are dependent upon is the status of those grant revenues from the state. They come in various different forms, education-related, non-education-related, and capital offsets. You can see we're up .85 from last year's actuals. And that's—we had anticipated last year a significant decrease that didn't materialize. We had also planned for significant use of fund balance. We had anticipated a $2 million use of fund balance in last year's budget, which will not fully be recognized this year. We'll have about $800,000 of that $2 million that we will not use, and I'll share that in a minute. But this just gives you a perspective on where we are at this point in time. We're down about 4% on state revenues since the high in '16 and '17 across the board from all sources. But we're planning on getting 13—in this proposed budget, $13.1 million in state revenues. There's a lot of unknowns that are still out there yet. We do not have a state budget that's been passed yet. That could still change or adjust. That's the case every year when we go through the budget cycle. There still are a couple wild cards out there around teacher pension. We thought that was out, still being told that it's in. Don't know where that'll end up. That would be another $120,000 that we would get hit with that's unanticipated and not budgeted for. But that's a risk that's out there. And then there's—as you guys have all heard in the media, there's other areas where the residents of Suffield would potentially have—you know, I'll call it taxation, whether it be upcoming tolls that may be approved, capital gains taxes, state car taxes, those sorts of things, or a teacher pension being pushed down. So there's just some unknowns that are still out there. But as of right now, this is what we know to be the case, is the $13,109, and that's what we would get. Just some highlights on the expenditure budget. You can see here, we've got Board of Education with an increase of $740,000, or 2.13% increase, 2.21 on debt service. That's largely driven by the new fire trucks that are going to be delivered and coming in, and the debt service load on those. The capital expenditures is up a little bit, 13.26%. That's largely driven—and there's a slide at the back of this, and it's also in the back of the last page in your book, where it's Remington Street Bridge is really the driver to that. We've got the towns portion of the Remington Street Bridge restructuring and construction—reconstruction of it in the budget for this year, as well as town roads. As you guys may recall, we had done bonding for town roads a couple years ago, and gotten a good start on that. Last year, we only funded $200,000 towards town roads, because we had a little bit of a balance in the capital fund for that. We've depleted that completely. So this year, we're refunding the road repair to try to stay up on that. And so you'll see that as another driver to the capital spending for this year. These next three were transfers that we had had in last year's budget, which are—we don't have this year. So you kind of have to almost take them out year to year. But we had a transfer to OPEB. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits for Town Employees and Teachers, you know, for at once they've retired, covering medical costs for them, medical benefits for them, based on their contracts that they had in place during their employment. We've gotten to a point where we've built up the OPEB balance, so that the income on the asset is enough to cover the claims. Or we believe that to be the case, based on what the actuaries told us. So there's not an additional incremental town funding required for that. The transfer to the insurance fund. Last year, our insurance fund for our actives and retirees was actually negative. And so we had funded some—we had funded some of that in last year's budget. We're not doing that this year. And then the transfer to the CNRE, that's really just movement between our undesignated fund balance and our capital non-recurring fund to be able to get a better return on our investment. And on a later slide, I'll show you the balance of both those, because you can think of the CNRE along with fund balance as really being our savings or our rainy day fund. And then from a general government operation standpoint, you can see an increase of $449,000 or 2.87. So an overall increase in expenditures of 1.64%. If you take out those three non-recurring items, it would be an increase of 3.2% across capital, debt, Board of Ed, and government operations. And that yields a mil rate of 28.72 after the revaluation. There was a slide in the prior deck that talked about revaluation, and it would have been 29.77 is what our estimates are, pre—if we didn't have a revaluation this year. Capital and debt services, just for the comparison, that represents 12% of our budget, so it's right in line with where we, as a Board of Finance, are comfortable having that be year over year. Just some quick highlights on changes in the budget. What was originally presented to us, submitted before any adjustments, was $62,219, with revenues of $16,872, with a total required taxes of $45,347, or a 13.73% increase. The adjustments taken by Board of Finance is obviously—we couldn't do all of the capital projects that were listed there, so it was a reduction there. There's a reduction—a net reduction of $412,000 from the Board of Ed. It should be noted that—the challenge that was put forth for the Board of Education was $500,000. There was also some increases that were funded for insurance increases and things like that, but the challenge was $500,000, but that netted out to that $412,000 that you see there. But it should be noted that it was a challenge of half a million dollars to the Board of Education, which they'll speak to later on how they're considering meeting those challenges. It should also be noted that the Board of Finance does not have any line item capability from a Board of Education standpoint. It's really up to the Board of Education on where they would want to achieve those—that challenge in order to meet the 2.13% increase that has been—is in the proposed budget. The other reductions, again, there's a net on the Selectmen side, too. There were some reductions from police budget standpoint, and then there were some increases for the same insurance impact on trying to fund our liability for an insurance fund. And then you can see some adjustments from interest fund balance utilization. As I said before, last year, we used $2 million. This year, we've got proposed, in this budget, $400,000 of fund balance being used. And in a minute, I'll show you kind of where the current fund balance in CNRE sits, which is pretty much in line with where we, as a Board of Finance, are comfortable, as we've been working it down over the last few years. So that brought us to a total final budget that you guys see here of requiring taxes So here's just that picture that I was talking about before of where we stand on our rainy day funds. You can see, back in '13, '14, we were up around 21% of our overall budget. We've been steadily working that down. As you guys know, during this period, we've had cuts from the state overall, and we've been trying to insulate our residents from that impact from the state and our regular budget increases from a town side, Board of Ed side, and also on the capital side. We didn't want to try to sacrifice some of those things because of the cuts from the state. And so we've used our fund balance. And you can see, we're down around 13.5% at this point. That's our estimated at the end of this current fiscal year. As I've said before, we're anticipating using another $400,000 in the proposed budget, but we're going to also have a little bit of a surplus in the current year budget because of not getting all of those cuts from the state that we had originally anticipated, which were pretty substantial. So as of right now, our best estimates are that we will be the start of this budget year after this upcoming budget, if approved. We would have a total CNRE and general fund balance of about $8.3 million against the total budget of $59.3 million, which would be 14%. And that's about in line with—from a Board of Finance standpoint, we've been trying to work that down to between 12% and 15%, so we're at 14% now. As I was talking about before, some of the capital projects, you'll see the full list on the last page in the green book. But paving, concrete, crack ceiling, $1.4 million. Remington Street Bridge, $640,000. Those are, you know, big—Remington Street Bridge, we didn't have last year. Roads, we only had $200,000 last year. So those are big drivers to the variance in capital spend year over year. And then from a middle school standpoint, we've got half a million, and then another $519,000 for various other school projects, inclusive of Chromebooks, teacher technology aids, and things like that. And then we've got drainage projects for 200. We tried to take the big buckets, and then from here, it just starts getting to be smaller dollars, and you'll see those on the last page. So those are just some of the quick highlights on the budget. I wanted just to go briefly, as opposed to what we had shared in the public hearing. But we can answer questions at the very end, and I'll hand it over to Melissa to talk a little bit more about the Selectmen side.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan, for that thorough explanation. So on the general municipal government operations side, we're basically just staying the course. And I want to start by thanking the town employees for taking the challenge to do more with less. They've been really—for the last three years, really trying to evaluate what they're spending, being more streamlined, looking for ways to get more out of your taxpayer dollars. So I'm going to thank them. I also want to thank the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance for working hard to bring us a good budget and working and understanding what our needs are on the town side. And then, most importantly, I want to thank our partners on the Board of Ed side, from the administration to the Board. Thank them for their willingness to do shared services. Every dollar that we can share together benefits the taxpayers and benefits all of us. So I look forward to more collaboration moving forward into the next fiscal year. Okay. So we'll start out with—the departments on the left presented a budget of $16.3 million approximately, which was a 4.17% increase over last fiscal year. As we do every year, the Finance Director and I meet with every single department head. We go through line by line each budget to see where there's opportunities to streamline budgets, to look for different ways to do things. We were able, through that process, to reduce the budget by $214,008, which brought us to a 2.81% over last fiscal year. This budget was presented to the Board of Selectmen and was approved. We brought that budget to the Board of Finance. We ended up with the figure on the right, $16,956.58, which is a 2.87% increase, again because the Board of Finance reduced the police budget by $50,000 of payroll, and then increased us to account for some additional medical expenses and health expenses for employees. What are our budgetary challenges on the town side? It's the same story we've heard for years, state funding. We have never been in a position, at least since I've been here, where we have less information coming out of Hartford about what our budget would be at this point. So that is an enormous unknown. We have open union negotiations. I believe we have about seven—let's see, 1, 2, 3. We have seven unions overall, and we have five that are in some state of openness. Some are almost done, some are in the middle, and some are just beginning. We also have utility increases over last year to the tune of $71,000. We were not being charged for certain fire hydrants. The company that was administering those hydrants was then acquired. They discovered their error. We will now be paying going forward, but luckily, we were not retroactively taxed on the shortfall, so that's good. And then finally, the rising cost of medical insurance. On the town side, we're looking at a 16.6% for employees' increase in medical insurance to the tune of $250,959. So that altogether comprises our increase. Again, I mentioned, these are the unions that are open: Town Hall, Library, Police, Fire, and Dispatch. So we'll be working on those going forward. Some departmental changes, whether it's through reorganization or vacancies. We have, on the left—I'm so pleased to scream from the rooftops—that Kent Memorial Library will be reopening on June 29, 2019. So I want to thank the staff there especially for their patience in what we never could have imagined would be this long process. We are adding eight staffing hours per week for additional desk coverage, once they're back in, as they call it, "the big house." We are hoping for a more efficient building, because it's been renovated from soup to nuts, as we all know, which will hopefully end up in reduced operating expenses, also for no other reason, because we'll only be operating one library. And our annual rental income for the swing space on Filer Place was $33,000 a year, so we'll see that back in our budget as well. With our shared services, which I don't think I touched on yet, with the Board of Education, we have a shared technology director. Our IT director has been doing a really comprehensive, thorough overview of expenditures, and it's resulted in lots of savings for us. We are hoping, once we're back in the library, we'll be able to take some critical look at some of the things that we utilize there and look for some economies of scale with the media centers over at the schools. So we're hoping for continued efficiencies there. Then we look to the middle in the senior center. We are adding 10 hours—a 10-hour-per-week new employee to assist with lunch prep and shopping and dishwashing, et cetera. We continue to have shared space utilization of the senior center with youth services. Then if you look over at Public Works, we are seeing some staffing changes, where we had a highway man retire after 30-plus years. We wish him the best, Tommy O'Brien. And Public Works Facility Director resignation. We are not planning currently to fill those positions, and that will result in a savings of approximately $144,000 in salaries and benefits per year. What we're going to do instead is we are going to hire three instead of two seasonal employees to do plowing and lawn mowing. And we are also going to be utilizing independent contractors on a project-by-project specific basis. What this will allow us to do is to find the person with the expertise for that particular project, and we think that that will not only improve our performance and our outcomes on our capital projects, but it'll result in a cost savings as well. Also, we are reviewing shared services between the Department of Public Works and Highway on the town side, and facilities with the Suffield Public Schools. And so we have been working together. We're going to continue looking for other ways to look together. Operational structure changes. We have non-union employee salaries. We're seeing a reduction in $42,090 overall. Again, a couple of them are because of some of the positions that we've left vacant: the shared services with the IT with the Suffield Public Schools, the reduced contracted services and by not having a separate town IT director. And so what that means is we had a consultant called the Walker Group that was filling a gap for us in our IT needs, kind of bringing us to where our IT infrastructure was stable. We were spending $89,000 for the last year for that. We will no longer be having that contract going forward, and we will be paying instead $37,350 to the Suffield Public School system for utilizing their IT director and some other employees. So consultant fees, a $37,350 overall increase. We also have a shared economic development consultant with East Granby, more regionalized shared services we're taking advantage of, for a net savings overall over last year of $4,740, which is a decrease in cost with improved services across the board. Finally, we have some anticipated bond issuances for 1920. So on the left, you'll see the approved bonding that hasn't been issued yet, $2.8 million for fire trucks and apparatus. And I'm pleased to say that the rescue truck, I believe, will be arriving on Friday. Is Chief Flynn here anywhere? Captain Thibodeau, you are here. Is that still on schedule?
Yeah.
Next Friday. Next Friday. So big red truck coming down the street. That's our new engine. $4.385 Town Hall for renovations, for a total of $7,185. Then pending 1920 budget approval, we included $640 in capital, but we're also going to keep flexibility by perhaps issuing this as part of a bond issuance. And this is just the local portion of the Remington Street Bridge. And then finally, over on the right, you'll see potential projects that are pending approval at this point in time. Filer Place redevelopment and Highway Garage relocation, which just—for anyone who's interested, at the Board of Selectmen meeting on the 15th, which is next week, we will be discussing in great detail the plans for Filer Place and Highway Garage relocation right in this location. And so at 7 o'clock, we look forward to people participating. And then additional road reconstruction. Brian alluded to the fact that we had expended all of the 2015 bond proceeds for road reconstruction work, and we're going to look to see what our next step is with the roads. And so this is the resolution again. We'll come back to that after. But prior to that, I would welcome the Suffield Board of Education, Susan Davis, Chairman of the Board, to come on up here and give us your presentation.
Hi, good evening. Again, my name is Sue Davis, and I am the present Board Chair of the Suffield Board of Education. And I'd like to thank you all for coming out. I appreciate your time and your interest in not only the town, but in Suffield Public Schools. Again, I would like to echo Melissa Mack's statements in terms of thanking some of the important people that allowed us to have this shared services within the town. We're having a little technical difficulty, so we will fix this. Okay. There we go. Where's it going? Is it on there?
Can we take a minute? And if you have any questions up to this point on the town side or on the Board of Finance's presentation, are there any questions out there for any of us at this point while we wait for technology to catch up with us? Yes, and we'll have a microphone brought over to you. So again, please take your name and address.
Mary Ann Muska, 42 Russell Avenue. I'm wondering why you have such a big increase in the human resource portion of the budget? And I understand that there's been a second person put into that position. I question why we really need that.
Okay. I can tell you exactly why we really need that. So we did add—in last year's budget, we added a support staff for human resources. I can tell you one thing that has been a trend in this town. We have not—our governance practices have been very lax over the last, I don't know, 20 years or so, maybe even longer. We have not done right by our employees. Our record-keeping has been horrendous. Our employees do not have confidence that they even know what their benefits are, because we've made mistakes and we haven't been held accountable. We now have an amazing Human Resources Director, Karen Ziemba. I cannot say enough about her. She has wonderful practices. We have a wonderful employment lawyer, who is Lisa Lazaric, who has showed us what good governance practices are. We are really making sure that we administer the employee benefits, the union contracts, to the letter of the contract, so that our employees can have the confidence to know that what they are receiving is appropriate, what they are entitled to, that they are getting really good treatment. And she couldn't do that all on her own, and that's one of the reasons why we were so behind in keeping up on our practices. Even our pension administration—we had a grievance recently within the last fiscal year. We couldn't even find the accurate pension ordinance and the plan document, because our documents were so poorly maintained. And so now I can say that all of that has changed, and our practices are much improved. But unfortunately, there is a cost to that, and that's why. But I wouldn't change a thing. Thank you for your question. Any others? Bill's getting it. Okay, Bill's getting the PowerPoint. Here comes Bill. Thank you. Once again, I'll turn it over to Susan Davis.
All right. So let's do a take two here. So again, I apologize for the—it really wasn't a technical difficulty, we just had to shift the presentation here. So again, once again, let me introduce myself. I am Susan Davis, and I am the Board Chair for the Suffield Board of Education. Again, I'd like to thank you all for coming out. But I would like to thank our district leaders and the Board of Ed for their time and their diligence and their effort this year. It was a challenging year on many fronts, and I could not be more proud to be associated with this group of people. I would also like to thank the town, Melissa Mack, and her willingness to come together with the Board of Education in our district to realize some shared services, so that we can really try to cut the expenses down to the schools, to the town, and ultimately you, the taxpayers. So again, thank you. So what I'm going to do today is really also do an abbreviated version of what we presented to the town meeting a few weeks ago, and just hit the highlights. So here we go. All right. So we just wanted to give a little historical overview of the proposed BOE budget, because it is quite an extensive process. So I'll start by saying that in January, the interim Superintendent Mark Windsor presented a budget to the Board of Education, which represented about a 4.8% increase over last year's budget. Since the budget is a fluid document, the BOE— Since the budget is a fluid document, the BOE members and the district leaders continued to look for areas to realize cost savings measures, which again resulted, as you can see here, in a budget that we approved in March of approximately 4.3% increase. However, as I said, we continually looked at ways that we could save money. And by the time we had to go in front of the Board of Finance, we had reduced the budget down to a 3.3% increase over last year's budget. So again, I'd like to say that, you know, as we continued to march through time, we were always looking at ways to reduce things, to consolidate, and to look for cost savings. And then, as you can see here, on April 15th, the Board of Finance approved their budget and at the same time, did reduce the Board of Education's request for our budget by $500,000. And so, what happened there is we had to go back to the drawing table, look at areas that we could feel that would not negatively impact the students of Suffolk, that we could pull out of our budget. When we did go to the Board of Finance, we stated that the 3.3% increase would not negatively affect the students of Suffolk. We felt that we could provide a good educational experience to all of our students, and we were very pleased with that amount. We did state, though, that if it was reduced lower than that, that we would have to cut teachers and programs in order to come up with the difference. And that is what we have been grappling with in the last couple of weeks. So one thing we wanted to take a look at or show you guys was basically our budget. And looking at the 83% of the BOE's budget is salaries and benefits. So when you truly look at that, our budget overall is extremely lean. All other costs are fixed. And so, there's not a lot of wiggle room in our budget if we have to decrease things according to the Board of Finance's decisions. So we did want you to see this. Kind of as a pie chart, just representing all of that. But again, remember, 83% of the Board of Education's budget is salaries and benefits, and we cannot control that. So moving on. One thing I would like to say is, as most of you guys are aware of, special education expenses across the state are rising. They're rising in every single town in Connecticut. Suffolk is no different. Special education has been identified this year as a need by the Board of Education, by district's leadership, and by the community. We have had a lot of transition within leadership and within staff in this department. And it has become abundantly clear that there are areas within this department that have needed to be addressed in order to serve all children in Suffolk well. As said previously, special education expenses are the main drivers of our budget, of our 2019-2020 budget. And it is the hope of this Board of Education that by investing in special education now, we will see the savings in the future. So just to kind of give you a little update, we have about 14.5% of our students are in special ed. And it is important to note that when a child is identified, services that go within that child's plan are mandated by law. And therefore, once that child has been identified, we as a district are obligated by law to provide those services to that child. So if you look at this, 22.4% of the total budget is special ed and pupil services. That is almost a quarter of the budget. And of our 2019-2020 budget, 1.35% of the total budget increase is for special education. As I had stated before, the district leaders looked at this and looked at this diligently and came in with really, as they put it, no horse in the race. And it was determined that there were certain areas that were cut too thin in previous years, and that that needed to be added back into the budget. Some of the examples of this is a few paraeducators that work with our most extensive needs children. We revised and looked at the overall structure of our special education department, and we added in a secondary special education supervisor that was allowed, that will allow us to better look at the services and hold accountability to the entire school district and take some of that away from only having one special education supervisor. We also added a BCBA and, as I had said before, paraprofessionals in order to support our most extensive needs students. And one of the reasons why we did this is because if we can provide those services in-house, we can avoid outplacing some of these students, which ultimately is a higher cost to the district as a whole. So, the next slide basically are the drivers to this budget. As you guys are out there looking, as I do as a taxpayer, we say, you know, one may ask, why does the Board of Education budget keep going up? Well, it's quite simple. You know, costs don't go down when we're dealing with salaries, insurances, and benefits. And so, what we have to do is take a look at what are the big drivers of our budgets. As we had said, the contractual salary increases, the health insurance increases, and these are just the increases, are main drivers to our budget. As I just stated, we did add additional special education staff. We added that for a reason. And as I said, and I'll repeat it again, we do believe that being proactive and investing now will result in, in the future, not having to outplace children, which eventually will result in cost savings. We also did see a special education tuition for those children that are outplaced. That has gone up, as well as transportation cost has gone up. And there, again, once those children are outplaced, we don't have a lot of wiggle room. I will say, Bill Hoff has been extremely diligent in looking at trying to share transportation costs and different things such as that. That has ultimately helped to keep our costs down. Now, looking into this, you know, we don't want you to think that all we do is add and add and add. What we have looked at is how can we decrease some of these, some of the expenses to the budget? And what we have done is we have looked at, we have reduced 3.6 teachers at the secondary level. We have also moved $166,000 of salaries into grants, which if we do that, that takes that out of our budget itself, and that further defrays the cost to the town. So speaking to that, one of the areas that we utilize to offset the Board of Education budget is looking at grants. What we have to do is, the school has used about $1.8 million in grant funding to fund certain things such as approximately 35 teacher salaries or FTE salaries, so teachers and support staff salaries. Those are not in our budget currently right now. Those are coming out of grants that are state-funded, and that is to offset, and federally-funded grants, that is to offset the cost to the town. Some of the items that are also paid for with grants in our districts are instructional supplies that help our teachers be able to provide the services that they need to, to the students in our district. It also looks at our magnet school tuition. We have students that are going to magnet schools. Approximately 30 students are going to magnet schools, in which we have to pay for those tuitions. And we have used grant funding in order to pay for that. As I said, instructional supplies, library books, maintenance projects are all funded by grants, which again, help defray our costs to you, the taxpayer, and to the town. And again, just to point out that if we lose those grants, we will have to absorb those positions or cut them, okay? But we believe these positions are extremely important to the overall quality of our district. But we would have to absorb those positions into our Board of Education budget, which would make the overall end number of that budget significantly higher than it is today. So Melissa Mack has referenced this. But what we do want to say is that this slide depicts basically education revenue that goes back to the town from the Board of Education, okay? We are projecting that there is going to be an increase of approximately $900,000 over last year. Some of that is through our educational cost share, which is the amount that the state contributes back to our district. We have an extremely active ag science program, which allows us to give money back to the town. And we also have a revenue source that is for the pre-K tuition and from tuition of employees of our staff, of children who attend Suffolk. And all that money goes back into the town budget. And this year, we are realizing $900,000 over last year's increase. The other thing that I would like to talk about is the town in BOE cost sharing. I think Melissa Mack did an extremely good job of really synthesizing what has occurred this past year. The partnership between the town and the school district has been renewed. I think it has been refreshed, and we have found ways to realize savings to the town. We have done that through IT services, which has amounted in about a $77,000 savings just from the Board of Education side to the town. And we are looking at more shared services with Department of Public Works, Maintenance, and Human Resources in the future. And so, again, for you all out there in this crowd, I think it is important to understand that both the town and the school district is really trying to maximize savings, really unify the town so that we can present you with a budget that has as little fluff in it as possible, but also can share some of the great services that are being utilized in the town and ultimately defray the cost of the budget to you, the taxpayer. So, this next slide basically is talking about the revisions that have had to be made by the Board of Education due to the approved budget of the Board of Finance. As I had said before, the Board of Finance essentially gave us a $500,000 reduction in the request of our budget. How we looked at this and how we decided to handle this is, we were able to modify, and Bill Hoff did this in a great way. He was more aggressive in some of his budget assumptions. Looking at that, he looked at the turnover vacancy ratio and looked at the excess cost sharing. And that resulted essentially in savings of $103,000. And then, with the excess cost sharing, we also realized, really at the 11th hour, that we were going to get more money back from the state than we originally thought, which was $175,000. That was, we were notified of that the Friday before we went, before the Board of Finance passed their budget. So what did the Board of Education do? We looked at, there is, we are not, if you look at this slide, it says eliminate funding for K through 5 field trips. Please understand, we are not eliminating field trips. What we are doing is the Board of Education subsidized field trips for parents. And at this point in time, you know, that amount was about $12,000, and we felt at this point in time that that would have to go back to the parents. And we thought that that was a decent way to realize some cost saving. The other thing we did is Larry Plano basically said that $55,000 could be reduced from maintenance funding. He felt that we could defer some of the projects that we put on the docket for this year so that, again, we would not have to cut teachers or programs. So where did that leave us? That essentially left us with $131,565. That is a large amount of money in a budget that is so thin. And so, the Board has been discussing ways to realize that. And one of the ways, and I do want to say that nothing has been voted on, so therefore, what we are proposing here today is just that. There are proposals and suggestions. So we are looking at implementing pay-to-play fees for approximately that $131,000. So if we go to the next slide, we wanted to give you all an idea of potentially what this may look like. And I do want to reiterate that, that these are possible scenarios and estimated cost. We discussed this at this past Monday's Board of Education meeting. That was live-streamed, and so you all can go on that and listen to our discussions to realize that this is not something that the Board of Education wanted to do. However, let me reiterate that when we came to the Board of Finance, we did state that we felt in order to maintain the services that we are providing to our children, now we would need that 3.3% increase, okay, in our budget. Now that we don't have that, our option is to cut personnel or to cut programs. And at this point in time, the Board of Ed is extremely reluctant to do that. Now that being said, what that means is we then have to look at another way to generate $131,000. And so, pay-to-play is on the table. Now, what does pay-to-play or pay-to-participate mean? These are possible scenarios. You can look at this, and you can see that we are considering instituting a student parking fee. Again, the estimated cost to families could be approximately $100 per year to have a parking space. Now, one of the reasons why we are choosing to look at this is we provide public transportation through buses, you all have seen them, the nice big yellow buses, to all the children in Suffolk. And therefore, we feel like this is an area in where if someone does want to bring a car to school, that that is considered an addition, and that they have ways to get to the school. We have provided that, and you, your taxpayer dollars are paying for that. And so, this is one area we're looking at. As I said, nothing has been voted upon. We are also looking at an activity fee. I will say, this is probably on the lowest priority of the Board of Education, but we're looking at activity fees for things such as drama, the debate team, robotics, different things such as that. It would be a lump sum fee. You can have all the activities that you would want for 30 to a maximum of $75 per year, per student. The last thing, which is the very real possibility, is instituting pay-to-play for sports. Pay-to-play for sports, we're looking at, do we just do it at the high school? Do we attempt to spread it out over the middle school as well? And we're looking at, and we've compared this to different districts, and most, this is being done in many of our neighboring towns, and it has been done for years. And so, it is a way in which the parents of this town and the community can help support and keep our teachers and our staff and our programs in place during these difficult lean times of budget season. So we are looking at $100, $250 per sport or a family maximum. And this is a maximum. I will tell you very strong and clear here that not any person on the Board is basically recommending us to go up to $750 per family or for the max of this. Again, in this time of difficult and dire needs of when we have to account for $500,000 in a budget in which it is lean, and otherwise, if we do not implement some type of pay-to-participate, teachers, programs, other staff members will be cut. And so, this was our best way to start thinking about this. We obviously need to wait for this town vote, and we will do that. And we are prepared to kind of delve into this deeper. But we just wanted to be quite honest with you as a town, that this is a real possibility based on this type of cut to our proposed budget. So again, I thank you for listening, and I appreciate, we will answer any questions, myself and Bill Hoff and Michelle Zawala will answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jen Bombard. I live at 6 Whitfield Way, and I'm here to ask you to vote no tonight.
Hey, oh, excuse me. You have to go through the chair, so hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have to wait. Okay, give the microphone back. We've now heard from the Board of Education, we've heard from the administration, we've heard from the Board of Finance. It's now our turn. We will ask the questions, debate, discussion on this budget that you have in front of you. you, and we will vote on it. A couple of things, first of all, the Board of Finance is responsible to present a budget to us. We can approve the budget or we can disapprove the budget. We can actually reduce the budget. But what we can't do by state law is increase the budget. That's authority of the Board of Finance coming to us, so we have to deal with, with If you are dissatisfied with this, then you have to act accordingly by either an up or a down vote. I will now ask that if you would like to speak, please identify yourself, your street address, address, speak to the subject at hand, the budget, avoid personalities. We're open for discussion. Yes, ma'am?
Again, I am Jen Bombard. I live at 6 Whitfield Way, and I would encourage all here to vote no tonight to our budget. It is a clear signal to our Board of Finance, who chose to ignore their constituents' requests to add back the amount requested by our Board of Education. This vote for me is not about pay for play. I have paid for sports and activities for my kids for more than a decade, and I will gladly continue to do so. Although, I venture to guess that many Board of Finance members and people here are against tolls in the state of Connecticut. This is essentially a toll or tax for families who have children who participate in athletics and activities. The issue here is the lack of support and respect that this town's finance board has historically shown to Suffield Public Schools. Last month, overwhelming support to reinstate education funds was expressed at the public budget meeting. The Board of Finance ignored the public comments. Even worse, the disrespect shown by some members of the Board of Finance during the public hearing was embarrassing to me as a lifelong resident of Suffield. As our superintendent, business manager, and board chair presented their budget, one member alternately feigned disinterest by looking at their phone or through bloody language, let his displeasure be clearly communicated. Although we may lack civil discourse on the national level, it is disconcerting to see this such display in our town. The town hall, our library, and our schools, there is a pattern. We are all paying the price for the lack of financial investment our town has put forth over the years. I think the time is now to say we value our schools, vote no, and add back the money to support our kids.
Further discussion on the motion. Have further discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Carrie White, 995 Newgate Road. I'm, I'm confused. First of all, I'm very disappointed to hear about the pay-for-play for, and for activities. My kids went through this school system a long time ago, and they were able to participate in things without having to come home and say, can you afford this amount so that I can do this? And I, just really makes me very sad that some children, I know, will wind up not doing things because of the cost. But that said, when this was presented to us just now, we were told that depending on how we vote, this will tell the Board of Ed how we feel about this. But if we vote no on the budget, then we're told that nothing can be added back in, so I don't understand how, how we can communicate this without making things worse by voting no. So, please, please explain.
One correction, maybe you didn't understand me. The budget that was presented to us by the Board of Finance, we act on that budget. We can vote it up, we can vote it down, or we can reduce it, but we can't increase it. If you want something different than what we have here, then you have to act accordingly, and the Board of Finance would then have to come up with a new budget, da-da-da. I, I'm not, I don't presume what they will do. I'm just telling you what the specifics are of what we're here to deal with. Okay? Everybody understand that? Again, the Board of Finance is the authority to present a budget to us. They have presented a budget to us with this number, certain amount going to differently and a certain amount going to the Board of Education. We have to act on that. We cannot raise it. We have to act on what we have in front of us, and you have to act accordingly. If you like it, you vote that way. If you don't like it, then you would have to act accordingly also. But the Board of Finance would again have to come up with a new budget. It's always has to go back to the Board of Finance to present a new budget, and we would be back here again. That's the way it works. Okay? All right.
Just a correction, I heard you say it twice. Boboy, 995 Newgate Road. I'm just trying to clarify, if it's rejected tonight and it goes back to the Board of Finance, could it then get larger? I realize we can't make it larger tonight.
Well, theoretically, yes.
Okay.
Okay, yes, it can. I mean, the Board of Finance, if it, it sees what goes on and it decides differently, yes. I can't predict that it will, nor can you, but that, you have to make your decision accordingly on this. Okay? Yes, sir. Wait, wait till you get a microphone and identify yourself.
Bill Lucas, Kane Street. So, just a question on that. So what you're saying is the total amount of the requested budget cannot be increased, but your allocations can be adjusted if we, if somebody votes no. So, for instance, the fire trucks, you could, you could choose to purchase two fire trucks instead of three and use that extra funding to...
To put it in the Board of Education. But no, we can't do that. We're not allowed to do that. But I'll let this first electman speak. Go ahead.
We're sorry for the confusion. Just to clarify, this evening, the vote will be a yes or no vote. It is, you can, as a group, choose to decrease the amount that's being presented to you this evening. You may not increase it in this forum. However, if the budget fails, within a week, we have to hold another public hearing to present, the, the Board of Finance will have to come up with another budget, which can be increased from this evening. And we would have to vote again within two weeks from today. I believe under the statute, I think those are right, two weeks. And then we go through this process again, and we will continue to go through this process until we have a budget that is approved. There's another avenue that involves a referendum. If, if people were to petition for a referendum, then we would go down that avenue, and that would be a, a full vote held at the, at the polls, where you would open it up and we would take an election that way. But at least at this point, if this is voted down, we would come back in a week for a hearing, approximately, and then in another two weeks to have this very same forum, and it can be increased. Does that answer the question? Are there any other concerns? Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on the motion on the floor.
Hi, Kim Warnton, 21 Clay Creek. Can you just provide a little more detail about that $1,004 in the budget that's listed as other? What items would be in that other?
Which $1,004? Is it the Board of Ed?
It was a $1,004 in the Board of Ed budget.
Okay.
On their pie graph.
We got a million...
I'm just curious what other is.
All right. Somebody from the Board of Ed, help us on that.
I'm Bill Hoff, the business manager for the School Department. In that $1,004, that includes athletics, it includes maintenance, includes a number of instructional supplies, it's just everything else that's kind of lumped together that it wasn't a big enough number to include in there. But the biggest numbers are athletics, maintenance, and instructional supplies.
Further discussion on the motion. Further discussion. Can you hear me? Over here. Over here. They're coming over your side. No, no, we're going with you.
Mary Ann Muska, 42 Russell Avenue. I would like to ask somebody on the, from the Board of Finance, what is the, and I'm not sure of the exact term, but the money that the town is sitting on, I know it was in the millions, but I'm not sure of what that number is at the moment. It's money that isn't designated for any purpose.
All right, all right. I'll, I'll ask. Okay. Any other questions you have for?
Well, I, I'd like to know that number before I make my comment.
Okay.
If possible.
Chairman of the Board of Finance.
So that was, on that one slide, the CNRE and the undesignated fund balance, and I know we don't, we won't switch presentations and go through that again, but that total amount right now is $7.9 million at the end of this current budgeted year. Now, we may have a little surplus, and then we're using another $400,000 in the current budget for that, so that'll bring it down to, and projected $8.3 million. Now, what that's used for, just so you know, like when we had that, I'll give you an example. We had Winter Storm Alfred hit. There were other towns that didn't have funds to support. That was one, over $1.1 million. Actually, I think it was even more than that. That was the initial amount we had to pay for that. We were able to fund that as a town to then get reimbursed from FEMA later. So you want to have some balance. To take that down to zero would be not wise at all, and it actually would adversely impact our bond rating, our ability to borrow money at, at the rates that we're able to borrow at. So taking it down lower than kind of the, the range that we've set about between, I'll call it, we say 12%, 15%, would be something that would have some, put us at risk a little bit. Okay? Yeah, it is, it is the lowest level it's been at, actually, the entire time I've been on this board.
Okay, but what is the number realistically that we should be aiming for with that?
With the number that it is, in my mind, it's currently at 14%. So we could go down a little bit more, but not a lot more. And you, we're using it every year. By the time, when we used fund balance to support the budget, especially to support operating costs, it creates a hole that we have automatically next year. So if you put, let's say we said, well, let's use $1 million of fund balance to offset the tax increase, now your very next year, without any increases, you've got $1 million, you have to find, and you're not going to get it from the state, you know, most likely. So you've got to now bridge that gap, and it's, you can get into a little bit of a death spiral if you're not careful. So you have to be very careful on how you use that fund balance, how much you use it each, each year, and what you use it on.
Okay, I guess my comment, are we really that poor a town that we have to balance budgets on the backs of parents, instance? Just for an instance, my grandson plays lacrosse. He's the goalie. It's cost his parents $1,000 this year for that boy to play on that team. Now, is he going to have to pay this extra money? Are they going to have to pay this extra money for his brother who swims? I, I just think that it's a bad precedent for our town to try to put so much on the backs of parents. We have some very young parents with struggling families. I just don't know. It just seems to me this is wrong.
Larry Edwards, 651 Bridge Street. In the Board of Ed budget, this shows they're down 84 students, which calculate roughly $1.5 million, if you play around with that paper, you know. And so you have, you're adding roughly 2.7 new teachers, and, but yet you're adding eight, eight, over eight new support staff. And it seemed to me, not knowing how your ratios of support staff to teachers is, that you probably have room for at least a couple more teachers there, rather than all those support staff running around. So, I, I would think teachers might be more important than a lot of support staff for the students, not only reduce class size, but to bring in younger, more, you know, teachers with, with new ideas and stuff. So I just don't understand quite why that disproportion is between teachers and support staff, and why more doesn't go to teachers and, and support staff.
All right, let's see if we can get an answer or some help. We get any help from the Board of Ed on that?
I think, you know, I'll just try and describe it as best I can. The, the support staff, first of all, a number of them are special ed-related, and, and as Sue Davis talked about, paraprofessionals. They're required for our most needy students, they're part of their individual education plans, they're required to be there, so we have no choice but to add those. A large part of the FTEs that we're adding are for our academic support staff. Those are actually not actually additional people, they're actually increasing the hours of the existing staff. But one of the things we're trying to do, and, and Sue Davis talked about, the need to try and reduce long-term our special ed costs. That's where our growth, our expenses are. We've actually reduced our regular education number of FTEs, but we continue to have issues, you know, with special ed because of the demands of the law. We're trying to reduce the need for people to going into special ed. So one of the things we're doing is adding this instructional support in the classrooms at that level to assist the teachers, to get the kids who are, you know, who need intervention help early on, so they don't, they don't transfer into special ed where the costs just become that much greater. Special ed refers to specifically when they have an IEP, so they're not special ed. They are actually regular, working with regular education students to prevent them from becoming special education students.
Further discussion on the motion. We have any further? Yes, ma'am, over here.
Anne Borg, 1310 Mountain Road. I'm a little, I'm concerned also about the pay-to-play or pay-to-participate. You've given us scenarios, but which one of these are we going to use? I mean, we're voting on this, but we're voting on something that has a range of costs and a range of possible scenarios, so we don't really know what we're going to come, end up with. Can you explain that?
Thank you. Yes, we did give you a range because, again, at this point in time, until we vote on something, nothing is concrete for the Board of Education. And, and what, what we are trying to do is look at a range of scenarios so that we can't, we don't want to, this is not, reluctantly, we had to go into pay-to-participate because of the overwhelming amount of the $500,000. If we do not charge the families of Suffield, which again, I'd like to say that many surrounding towns have done that, if we don't charge something, we will have to decrease and eliminate teachers, support staff, and programs. And so, that being said, the Board is looking at all options. Some of those numbers were the absolute most, and I, and I think I'm trying to be pretty transparent with you, that the Board of Education does not want to come in and be at the highest at this point in time. However, if we do that, and it, and the pay-to-play does not equal out to that $131,000, we are going to have to decrease teachers, decrease programs, to, to, to adjust for whatever doesn't get up, get us up to that $131,000. So again, I think unfortunately, pay-to-play is in Suffield right now. The amount of that is what the Board is grappling with, and we are very cognizant. I do want to state that no child will be denied participating in sports. There will be a scale, in a wa, not a scale, a waiver, that if there is a need, that a child can, or a family can propose that to the school district. But again, these are things that the Board really feels, that if we decrease any more teachers, if we, if, if we decrease programs, we are negatively impacting the educational value of the kids of Suffield.
I understand that, but I'm asking you, if we vote for this budget, if we vote yes, are we voting to implement one of these scenarios or all three of these scenarios?
Well, as Ryan Anderson said, one of the things about the Board of Education budget that is in any town is that it is, you, you cannot tell the Board of Ed how to do line-item reductions. So it is up to the Board of Ed to come up with that. So if the budget stays as is, we will be implementing some type of pay-to-participate.
Further discussion? Yes? Further discussion. Yes, sir, in the back.
Yeah, hi, I'm Brian Koss, 10 Berry Place, and full disclosure, on the finance board. I'd like everybody to look at page five of the Green Book that was handed out. And in full disclosure, this was pretty much a page that I made. This is a summary of what the Board of Ed presented to the finance board that at least I took into consideration as I supported the cut that we made. So essentially, if you look at what, what the board submitted, a three and a half percent increase in their year-over-year spending, and we cut it down to 2.13. The student count is declining in the school district by 84 kids, about 4%. It's been declining every year for quite a while and is projected to decline based upon the information that we were provided for the next couple of years. We added staff year-over-year in the budget in all categories are flat or up. So the notion that people are being cut, it's not true. It's really where it's, how many more people do we want to add to support a smaller student base? These are the actual numbers. I'm just telling you what we saw. So we're adding about 3% more FTEs in all categories to support less students. And when you look at it and the cost per kid, what this, what the Board of Ed submitted was a 7.7% increase in the per cost per pupil. That's a lot. Inflation is two-ish. So it's about triple-ish or more of what it is per student than people are earning in their money. And the, and the board, after the Board of Finance reduction of $500,000, there was still an over 6% increase in the cost per student, which is approximately triple what the general inflation rate is, which we've been endeavoring on this board for the 20 years that I've been on it, to try to manage the budget toward. So I asked the question, they said, well, if you cut the budget, we're going to have to eliminate people. And I said, no, you don't. You just don't need to add the people that you're adding to go from what you had in the budget last year to this year. And the response was, well, most of those people have already been hired. Not all of them, but most of them. So this is what actually happened on the finance board. And I personally think a 6% increase in the cost per student is something that we ought to be able to manage to without having to charge people to pay for sports. We're not cutting people. It's a matter of how many more people we're adding to support a declining enrollment base. These are not my numbers. These are the school board's numbers. This is what was in the budget that they presented to the finance board. And I think we acted quite rationally in what we did. Because, and the cuts that were made were none. They found two-thirds of them through shoring up some assumptions in the budget to more appropriate amounts, and the rest by basically charging people to do services without actually addressing the underlying fact that the school system's enrollment is declining and we're adding more staff. So that's my two cents. I think we need to figure out how to get this done with the budget that we've got, because it's a good budget. The school should be able to get by with $750,000 more money. It's not that they're getting cut from what they're spending this year. It's just a matter of how much more money. And we should be able to get by with this, in my opinion, and having sitting on this board for over 20 years. And I think what we did was quite reasonable. So that's just my two cents.
Further discussion. Yes, sir.
Hi, Geert Mol, 399 South Grand Street, and I'm part of the Board of Ed, but I don't want to speak for the board, but as a concerned Suffielder. Yep, okay.
Right up to your chin.
My kids kept me up all night last night, so I have to read from paper. I'm sorry. I would like to point out a few things from a wider perspective, because we're focusing on next year's budget, obviously, but you cannot isolate that from the longer-term impact to our town. First thing to remember is that the success of our schools has an impact on all Suffield residents, not just the ones with kids in school. Again, there is a direct financial impact for all of us that depends on the success of our schools. Multiple studies have shown that an increase in school expenditures and the performance of the schools have an immediate impact on the property values in the district. The lowest of the low-ball figures and estimates is that we can increase scores by one percentage point. If we do that, the home values go up by approximately half a percent, and that is the lowest, lowest of low-ball estimates. Practically, in Suffield, with the median home value of around $290,000, that would mean a home value increase of $1,450 by getting our scores up by just 1%. And I'm not implying that increasing the ed budget more will automatically mean better scores. But I'm almost certain that if we continue on this path of zero investment in our schools, we are not going to improve performance. Because it's not just about rankings. Does anybody here really believe that we are going to attract the best educators and administrators by year after year, stripping our budget to the bare minimum? Does anybody here believe that young families are still going to want to move to a town that hasn't made any serious investment in education in the last 10 years? The budget in its current form just covers the salary and healthcare cost increases, and allows us to bring our special education to a slightly more appropriate level. But that meant cutting in a lot of other places. We are not doing anything to grow or improve our results. To the contrary, I understand where these budget cuts are coming from and the obsession with not wanting to ever increase taxes in this town. But long-term, we are bleeding ourselves to death because we are not investing in our schools. The rankings are not getting better. There is no new blood coming into our town, and families that want better for their kids are leaving our schools. I think we need to get our heads out of the sand and go back on a path of investment in schools, not just for this year, but for many years to come. And not just because it's the right thing to do for our students, but because we will all benefit from it in the long term. Thank you.
Further discussion. Further, I see a hand way up in the back there. Wait, wait till you get the mic, please.
Scott Gilmartin, 759 Hale Street. Can someone from the Board of Finance give us an understanding of what this is going to mean to our mill rate, what the increase would be based on the budget as submitted? Because the gentleman over there indicated somehow that, you know, our taxes aren't going up. I want to know if they are. Based on the mill rate.
Got you, got you. And the chairman of the Board of Finance.
So, so the mill rate, we've gone through a revaluation this year, and valuations is all you guys have seen. It's going to be variable per ta, by taxpayer. Some taxpayers are going to see an increase higher than inflation. Some taxpayers are going to see an increase at inflation or perhaps lower. It all depends on kind of their value, the valuation on their home. There was a lot of assessments that were done on street ratings and things like that, even though no modification was done to the home. So it's going to be a little bit variable. On an overall basis, we need additional funds from the taxpayers of about 2.8%. You'll see that in the book. If you look at the book and you look at the, I think the second page here, you'll see at the very bottom, our, page three of the book, the bottom of that, you'll see the overall current taxes needed, going from last year $40,461 up to $41,612, an increase of 2.85%. Now, again, that's not, there are, you know, new constructions in town, things like that. So not everybody's tax will go up that, by that much. Now, when you speak specific to your question on mill rate, the mill rate will actually go down, but the valuation will go up. And your, your tax bill will actually go up as a result. But I can't tell you exactly how much because it's not a normal year because of the revaluation. I know that's tough. I can't give you an exact answer because of the revaluation, but that's, does that answer your question?
Just to be clear, are taxes going up?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion. Yes, ma'am.
This is Tracy Echols, 1214 Mapleton Avenue, and I am on the Board of Finance. I just want to address this misconception that there is no room in the budget. This year, this current year, the school board will have $175 surplus. And this is a year in which they paid for two superintendents, one full-time, one part-time. This is a year in which they hired a special ed supervisor halfway through the year. And this is a year where they had more outplaced special ed students that were originally in the budget, $175,000 surplus. There is room in this budget. Our assumptions in this budget, which are very conservative, they're not, in our opinion, in the Board of Finance opinion, looking at the details of the budget, aggressive. And cost savings can be made by just looking and tweaking some of those assumptions, so that there would be no pay for participation, there would be no cuts in, in faculty, and no cuts in services. So I would say that the Board of Ed Finance, looking at the details of this budget, believe the Board of Ed can find those $130,000 in savings without affecting our children and their school.
Further discussion. Yes, sir.
Robert White, 995 Newgate Road. I've been listening, and I've been agreeing with both sides. So what I wanted to emphasize was that there's been a lot of questions and a lot of talk about this pay-for-performance. If my math is right, we're talking about $130,000, which is less than a third of 1% of the Board of Ed budget. So I've got to agree that there's enough wiggle room to find that third of a percent without dunning the parents of the town on a pay-for-play.
Further discussion on the motion. Yes, sir.
Joe Blake, 8 King Fisher Lane. Full disclosure, I am a high school principal. So I have both experience and bias. I don't know that I've ever not supported a Board of Ed budget. That being said, when pay-for-play gets trotted out as a high school principal, it makes me shudder. It is a culture killer. We talk about not getting, you know, not supporting programs and education for kids. Well, athletics and activities are programs and education for kids. The, the damage that's done by pay-for-play is not easily quantifiable, because when parents pay for play, there is an expectation of playing time. Okay? And when playing time doesn't happen, there's problems. So coaches are less, are more reluctant to carry lots of players on their teams, which, if you look at our rosters in Suffield, we have a lot of kids on the team. And some kids don't get a lot of playing time, some do, but they're happy to be on the team. And I'd hate to think that our teams are going to go to bare bones because of issues of pay-for-play and the complications that come from it. So I'm not supporting pay-for-play. I never will as a, as a parent or as a taxpayer. I think that there are other ways to find the money. My rule of thumb when talking about budgets is you go for things for people and that do not directly work with kids. And analyzing that, that being said, I know the Board of Ed, Board of Ed has a tough job. The Board of Finance has a tough job, and I appreciate that you guys do a thankless job. I just think we need to do something else other than pay-for-play because of the long-lasting social and leadership growth damage done to kids by instituting something like that. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion. Yes, way up in the back.
Jason Quromax, Silver Creek Drive. I just had a quick logistical question for you. You mentioned multiple times that we don't vote anything other than yes or no. So if there's an, needs to be an increase, there needs to be a decrease. That doesn't happen by anybody in this room. We just vote yes or no. So my logistical question is, how would the Board of Finance know what a no vote means in terms of increasing or decreasing?
We've had this situation a number of years ago before. The Board of Finance would have to come up with a new proposal. Depending, normally, the Board of Finance will look at the vote and see what the numbers are, and helping them to devise a new budget. That's about the best.
Yeah, I guess my question is, there's a number of people that can vote and vote, hold on, because they want the vote or the budget to be increased. There's a number of people that can vote no because they want the budget to be decreased. And so we're just throwing darts at a board blindfolded until we get it right.
Okay, I've got to, I got to clarify one thing with you. This is the legislature to town, and the state has given us certain authorities. We have the authority to approve a budget. The legislature to town, us, the town meeting members, can reduce the budget. You said we couldn't. We can. We can reduce the budget. We cannot, by state law, increase that budget. Okay? We can't do it tonight. Right. We're sitting as the town meeting. We cannot do that. If you want to increase this, especially the Board of Ed side, then you have to act accordingly to this budget so that the Board of Finance will come up with something different. And that's about the best you could do. Further discussion on, yes, over way in the back. It's coming for you, sir.
Bob Ackles, 1214 Mapleton Avenue. And I'd just like to address that question. I have an impression about how this works, and perhaps you can correct me if I'm right or wrong. So there's a resolution before this meeting. We have three choices. We can vote yes and pass it. We can vote no and reject it. If we reject it, then the budget will go back to the Board of Finance. They come up with another one, in their best judgment of whatever it is they think people want it. But the third option is that somebody could make a resolution amending the current resolution, lowering the budget. That would be separately voted on. If it passes, then that's the new resolution that we vote yes or no on. If it fails, then we have only two choices, yes or no. We cannot amend this resolution to increase the budget according to state law. Is that a fair?
Yes.
Is that clear?
Okay.
Thanks, all.
Board of Finance Chairman.
Yeah, so Ryan Anderson, I just want to say one thing, too, from a, yep, do you hear the mic? Yeah. So one of the things that we kind of, we talked about in the public hearing, but didn't talk about here, is we have a contingency line item in the Board of Finance budget every year. That contingency line item last year was $360,000. At the same time that the Board of Finance took action, say, hey, we want to try to challenge, we had this $500,000 challenge to try to make the budget as lean as possible, we also increased the contingency to $500,000. So the, the mindset, at least behind my, my voting on our board, was to try to keep budgets as lean as possible, increase contingency should we have a unforeseen, you know, cost that came into the school side as well as the town side. It can be used for anything. We would then leverage that contingency for those overages. There's also a minimum budget requirement that is in place. Once the Board of Ed has a particular budget, in the next year, that's the starting point. It can't be reduced. It can be reduced minimally on a per-student basis when it goes down, but it's, it's a small, it's like $3,000 or $4,000 a student. So I just wanted to make that clear, is that that's there as well. And that's part of some of the reasoning within the Board of Finance is make sure you understand that that contingency balance is there, and that contingency balance is for all budget items, whether they be town side or education side.
Further discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Carrie White, 995 Newgate. It seems to me that the majority of the people who've been speaking really don't want the pay-for-play. And if we were reassured that, that, that perhaps this contingency fund, we're going to be used so that this wouldn't happen, then I think there'd be much more of a chance that people would approve this. I think that that's the real concern of people, that we don't feel we have any control over what's going to happen with those figures that we saw up there, and that that really is going to negatively impact the students in this town.
Further discussion. There was a lady here. The lady right there. Yeah, that lady. Right here, right here. Look where I'm pointing, right there. I'm the one who chooses who gets the microphone. That's, that's my job. I'm sorry, ma'am, but that's my job to do that.
Cameron Aldrich for Kane Street. So on the earlier meeting, April 21st, one of your board members stated that they're, in the Suffield Middle School, there are 15 kids. in the Suffield Middle School, there are 15 kids per class. But instead of doing the pay-for-play, you can simply just, from my understanding, you can simply take kids from other classes next year, you can put them in other classes, and then you don't have to make families that may not be able to afford it, and they have kids that can, that are amazing at sports and they can't afford to do sports. Instead of making kids do the, or families do the pay-for-play, you can cut teachers if you must, and you can add kids to other classes. Instead of taking away from kids that have abilities that are amazing, you're taking that away from kids and their confidence that they can't do anything.
Up in the back.
Hi, my name's Tim Reynolds, 56 Deep Rock Harbor. I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen, and I've enjoyed listening to all your comments tonight and your questions, but I think it's time to vote, so I'm going to move the question.
There's been a motion made to move the question, and it's been seconded. That motion is a motion to basically cut off discussion, or to cut off debate. And we would, after that, if it passes, we would go immediately to a vote. Everybody understand what we're voting on? We're voting on whether it's time to cut off debate on this. Now, because it is a procedural motion on this, it takes two-thirds to cut off debate. So we will try a standing vote, and I would ask, we need some tellers for this. What I would ask the town clerk to appoint some tellers, or give me the names of some people to, to do the counting. Okay? Do in the middle? And the others will do the outside. Okay. Now, all those, now, the ones that are allowed to vote here are voters in town. If you're a registered voter in town, you can vote here. You're a town meeting member. Also, if you have property in town, real or personal property, and you are a U.S. citizen, you, of $1,000 or more, you're allowed to vote, a vote at town meeting. Others are guests. They are not allowed to vote. Everybody understand that? Okay. We're asking whether we're going to close debate. All in favor of closing debate, stand and remain standing until the vote is done. And how many we get on the left? Okay, we're all voted. We're all voted. Okay, all those who have voted yes, sit down, please. Those who wish to continue debate, please stand and remain standing while we take the count. I know, I know. Well, they got to do it. You got to do it. Once you start, you can't not do it. I understand. But once you start a vote, you cannot interrupt it. Sixteen and twelve. Yeah, six, twelve, sixteen, seven, right? All right, who doesn't get it? Okay, you may be seated. You stay here, because you're going to help to describe how to do that. The motion is, been carried by the yes vote, so we are now proceeding to vote on the question at hand. Eighty-one in favor, thirty-five opposed. We'll now go to the vote. Those in the back of the room, outside in the foyer, if you want to vote, you must come inside. We are going to close the doors. During the vote, we have to have the body or the hall completely closed. So please, those who are out there who are going to vote, come on in. Now, if you're going to vote, and when you're going to vote, you should have a paper like this. If you've been given a vote, if you came in and didn't get one of these, and you are a voter, go back to the back of the room and get somebody to get you one of these ballots. If you want to vote yes, you tear off the yes vote and put it in the box when it's your time. That means you want to approve the budget. If, on the other hand, you vote no, you take out the no and put it in when it's your time. You may close it up so that people don't know which one you're doing, so you can put it in a budget seal like that. Each voter is only allowed one vote. If you had a neighbor next door who had to go home for whatever reason, and they gave you their ballot, that's unable to do at a town meeting. You can only vote if you're here. Does everybody understand the procedure for voting? Now I'm going to ask the town clerk to explain how we're going to do it.
What you'll do is come forward. We have a ballot box, which obviously is empty. We'll stand up front. If you'll come forward, I will, well, stand over here. You can circle around, come on forward, and place your vote in the box. We have the registrar of voters and my assistant town clerks. We will tally the votes after everyone is casted. So.
Okay. So a little bit of orderliness though, here. I would ask that that side of the room, way over on the left, vote first. And so if we're ready, put out the ballot box, and those people over there come by and vote. Yeah. If someone is disabled and is still in their seat and unable to get up here, we will go to you. Just raise your hand, and we'll go to you for, with the ballot box. Oh, yes. And the only reason I can vote is because it's secret.
So here were two people. We were two votes over the total count when we did the standing. There were two people who came in, but did not register and had a ballot.
They can still vote on here. They have to have a ballot to vote.
The question is, can we register that? I would think.
I did, I told them, I told them to go up and get a ballot. I told them that. But they got to do it before I call, close the vote. I'm going to close the vote sometime. I won't do it. I'll have the, I'll have the, I'll have the body close the vote. We got a couple. Any more needing to vote? Any more needing to vote?
They are right here, there's two.
Okay. It's the last call for the vote.
Let's tell them if there's.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll decide on that.
If there's anyone who did not vote and needs a ballot, they need to see the...
Well, okay. Anybody who did not get a ballot and needs a ballot, you better hurry up. We're going to be closing the vote in a moment. Is there somebody down here? She voting? No, I'm going to... Okay, seeing no more voters or no more willing to cast a ballot, I'm going to ask the body to close off voting. Please, we need a motion to close voting. So moved. All right, we have a second. Second. All, all those in favor of closing off voting indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The voting has closed. Okay, we're ready for the count. If everybody would be quiet for a minute, I'll make the announcement on the... vote. We had 115 votes cast. Sixty-nine were in favor of the budget. They voted yes. Forty-six voted no. The budget has passed. Also, that other item that was part of it, the resolve, is part of the original motion. So now, I am ready for a motion to adjourn or to dissolve this town meeting. So moved. Second?
Aye.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned and this town meeting is dissolved. There we are, you keep that.
I have just.
Okay.
You're my number one. Yeah. We're twins. We're microphones.
Well, thank you. Very well done.
It's always an excellent job if it doesn't break out in fisticuffs.
Yeah.
Excellent.